I'm Chairman.
Welcome back to our afternoon session of our March 10th meeting. Next up on the agenda is we are going to give a brief update on our NACO conference, an update on commissioner boards that we have been attending. Mr. Caldwell, do you want to start?
Sure, I can kick off the boards that I've been attending. In February, I attended the Payette Forest Coalition and the Boise Forest Coalition meetings. A lot of that was some of the same talk specifically for the Payette Forest. The Forest Service did not participate due to layoffs. However, we were provided the opportunity to provide questions that we would like the Forest Service to cover when they are back. They are talking about some salvage projects. They are, I thought this was neat, they were discussing Valley County Firewise projects specifically. Other counties or other participants could maybe mirror some of our projects. O'Mara, that was great. Also attended South Lake Sewer. We are back up and running with that after a brief hold in January due to some of the new executive orders. They're moving forward, they're going to start doing the outreach and then also start a community advisory board. So that's moving forward very well, especially considering the funding that they have. They still think that they can move forward with the funding. Also attended my first Central District Health meeting. That was very interesting. It was definitely just a learning experience as it was my first one. They did cover several of their programs, including one that's parents' teachers, and they just hired a new employee in Valley County. So I hope to reach out and meet that person in that position. It's a great program to step into families that meet certain criteria to help early detection of any disabilities, just teaching knowledge about being a family, childcare, and I thought that was a very interesting program.
Do you feel like you're well received and new on the board?
Yes, I think that they are sad to see Elk go after his 10 years of service, but understand that as a commission, we decided we would rather have a sitting commissioner as the be appointed.
Now, have you been appointed yet?
Yes, I've been appointed and voted and...
So you're voted in there?
I'm official. So coming up over the next three months will be budget meetings for March, April, and May. However, the chairman attends the one in May, I believe. Oh, interesting, okay. I think if I'm reading it correctly, is maybe we both do, but chairmen do as well. And then, did you attend the SRS call on Friday or were you not? Okay, so I took that because you had your legislative committee. It was a very interesting call. We have essentially two options. Moving forward under a CR, under the Speaker of the House, they're trying to get some people to really work with him. Fortunately, some of the acres in Louisiana have been moved into his district, so he has higher SRS acres than he did before. So they're working on that, trying to get it through on the CR. One interesting topic was that there are some counties in Louisiana and then some in Oregon that will actually get more funds through the 1908 program than they are through SRS, so that isn't boding well for support through the Louisiana representatives. They have more House Republicans signed on, but they believe that they're going to need 100% of them to get this passed. So they did note that the 25% check will be paid within the next two months, however. Those are my board reports.
Okay, I can go next. I want to give an update on the NACO conference. The three of us went back to NACO and there was a lot of good information that came back. There was a few frustrations this year, but for the most part, it was a very good conference and lots of good information. Some of the, my highlights from that conference, I attended a workshop that was on disaster recovery response, and I brought back to our disaster manager a tabletop exercise that we had completed there, and it was all on firewise training. And if you have a fire, what, how do you mitigate for that fire after the effect? And it was very detailed, very in-depth. So I will be spending some time working with our group, our fireworking group and our individuals that do that to make sure that we are ready for in the event of an emergency, what the things are that we need and are on the ground. So he had reported back to us this morning. I'm really excited about the fact that Valley County has taken the lead in setting some standards for the state of Idaho and how to do this work, because I think we do a great job. So very excited about that. One of the things that they talked about though, and I think that we need to talk about this, is underinsured in our community. Most people never check their insurance policies to see what they're insured for. So with the huge influx in what our property gains have been, what they're finding throughout the country is that people get into an emergency situation and go, oh my God, I forgot to raise the value of my home. So they are far underinsured, and I think we do need to do some work on that to notify our constituents, check your insurance policies.
Yeah, I need to check my home.
Yeah, and come to find out FEMA, in the event of a FEMA event, a flood, natural disaster, you're only covered for like $43,000. So it's a very small amount, and that's like on the high end. Most people get $10,000, $20,000 for a FEMA, and so if they don't have insurance in place, then it's critical need. So that was the one huge takeaway that I took from that. But then we just talked about the things that were different parts of the country which had already had experiences and looking at how they rebuilt their codes and ordinances. I have some communities I'm going to go back and look at to find out, you know, how we might be able to emulate their codes that they put in place after going through a disaster response. They talked a lot about fraudulent contractors moving into areas after emergencies, and that was very interesting to hear the percentage of people that come in that are contractors that are fraudulent contractors afterwards, huge deal.
I don't think we have much, much problem with that up here.
They move in after the fact.
But we haven't had any real disaster. Only disaster we've had is police structures.
Yeah, if they, but right now, we already have such a problem with hiring contractors and getting labors, that if we were to have lost 200 of those homes over there last year on West Mountain, we would not be able to support that and rebuild. So that's when people move into the area. Oh, I can help, and they're taking people's money and then they leave. There was a lot of conversation now that California has gone through this on looking at how do you rebuild? And so like our, we need to look at our policies, because on West Mountain, those local homes over there were built under codes that were from the 50s, and so they would not meet current building codes. So the conversations throughout the country is, do you allow them to be, build back what they had, or do they have to come into current compliance with building code? That's an ongoing conversation throughout the country, because in California, a lot of those homes were very old homes, and they cannot afford to rebuild in those locations. So what they have now is they have all of these developers moving in, because it was prime property, and they're purchasing the properties, so they will now convert into high-end homes instead of their local workforce. So these are conversations that we need to have with the emergency management team and find out, you know, what's, what we would look to, to put into our ordinances.
And that was another piece of that, that's, to me, is almost illegal is, a friend of mine said his two sons, I can't remember if you used to tell me, or it was a friend of mine, lost both their homes, 4,000 square foot homes in that fire down in LA. That's because that's where they worked, and he wanted to rebuild. He said, okay, we got the money to rebuild from our insurance and we're good, but the insurance company says, it's going to cost you $80,000 a year to insure these homes. And they're going, I don't think so. And they, they went to Vegas to build their homes, and they'll just, you know, drive back and forth. And it's like, that's not right.
That's why we're going to have to talk to our state, you know, what is being prepared in all of these situations?
Yeah.
In the areas throughout the country, new owners, they had to upgrade to higher standards. One of the recommendations there would be to fund local land trusts to buy the original parcels back and step in before these large developers move in, in order to ensure that they remain in local hands. They talked a lot about increased density. Throughout the country, it's really important, as these people are rebuilding, they're allowing increased density to reduce the cost of the structures. So on these ones that may have been an acre lot, now they're allowing them to rezone into smaller so that they could actually create some affordable housing. There's a lot of talk about county officials getting trained on emergency preparedness. We count on our emergency manager a lot, but you know, we should also have training so that we know who's, who's does what in the event of an emergency. There was a lot of misinformation.
I have a bulldozer.
Yeah, no, it was called, how do you not talk to the public or the newspaper until you get good training to do that? A lot of the things that he talked about, we were already doing, the special needs registry, where you have those with special needs in your community and the senior population, that there's a registry, and Juan does a great job with keeping track of that. Let's see. You guys were at the Public Lands Hearing, it was a good hearing. There's a lot of things that I am now going to go and try and find out. They talked a lot about a 10J rule, a TNA Species Act, I don't know anything about those, so I'm going to go inform myself on those. There is a new executive order out on NEPA, and I had not seen that yet, so I want to go and research what the new executive order is on NEPA.
All we heard was that it was, they were going to cut it down, give them six to 12 months to go NEPA and speed up the process so timber sales could go through, so...
Well, we don't have any mills, so we got to make sure we have mills and that that entire cycle was there.
Well, and the tariffs got to be able to make timber marketable, so they can make a profit off the timber. So it all goes hand in hand.
One of the discussion points is coming back to our counties and reaching out to the Forest Service to find out how we could help with positions that are considered critical. I did find out, and I will reach back to Senator Crepo's office, that our avalanche centers are staffed. They were determined to be critical needs, so they are staffed, we were questioning that. So I don't know if you guys are okay, I will reach out to the Forest Service. If you guys want to reach out, that's too, that's fine too, but we need to find out from them, what is their critical staffing needs that are not being met? Because this summer, I'm very concerned that we are going to have enough people on the ground to manage the camp sites.
Well, yes, we need to hear that from them. They already told us prior to, that's going back prior to the, you know, the fires getting, they weren't going to have people interns coming this next year.
Yeah, so we are going to have to reach out on that. Okay, local stuff, the Economic Development Council meets tomorrow afternoon, so I don't have an update there yet. I am going to ask them, they have an infrastructure group, a subcommittee, and I'm going to ask them to engage on a conversation they've just recently had. So we are approving development here, but the developers are going to North Lake and Payette Lake, and the hookup fees are making it so that we probably will not get these subdivisions put into place. One of them in Donley was a $16 million hookup. It was $50,000 per lot to hook up with what the sewer district was requesting. What? That makes it so that those lots are going to be so expensive that you'd never get affordable housing again. So we have to figure out how we can help the process of getting some infrastructure in place to try and, you know, create some opportunities.
We were talking about North Lake Shore Water and charge of $50,000 a lot?
$16 million. Yeah, how much was that per, 50,000 per lot? But I mean, that's kind of happening all over, so we need to just make a working session with our infrastructure group and see how we can help inform this conversation, because we will never get affordable housing here again. And more importantly, it forces all development into the county instead of hooking it up to central services, and that is not what the community wants.
Now, when you say meeting with this group, what kind of group I mean, is this group where the...
It's the Economic Development Council.
But is Lake Shore Development, I mean, North Lake Shore and Water going to be in a meeting like that?
That's what I'm asking them to do.
Because I mean, how do you justify, wow, I mean, that's...
They're their private entity, they can decide their prices.
That's ridiculous, so I mean, it's, to me, okay, if I'm them, okay, if I got people that are hooked up to my system, I'm getting a monthly charge from all these people. Are you just making it $50,000 just to hook up? Those people are going to go somewhere else.
I think there's more than just the, and we're probably getting off, but this will be for something else.
I'd like to know...
More to follow on that.
Yeah.
We have an infrastructure need in Valley County.
Because that's crazy, I'd go out and buy five acres and put in my well and septic and, oh yeah, I'll do that in a heartbeat.
Which is not what we want. We want density toward the cities or to city services. I attended the L.A.P.C. meeting and the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Juan updated us this morning, so I won't go into that. That's moving along nicely. Legislative Committee continues to meet for IAC. There is a ton of bills going on right now, things that are going to severely impact the county. So if you get a chance on Fridays, you know, listen in, finding out what, what we can do there, please pay attention when they send out those emails saying you need to contact somebody regarding this, because it is seriously going to impact our county this year with some things happening at the state.
The one that's, send a cent, or maybe it was you, House Bill 266.
Yeah.
It impacted what?
That is, they want...
Those are building permits and things like that.
They want to shorten the window to where if you go out and do a property inspection, it has to be within a certain length of time. And they're targeting like the state inspectors, because I guess the state inspectors are taking a couple weeks to get out to someplace, but they want to make it, excuse me, 48 hours. And if we have somebody sick, if we have something else, it could become an issue, so that could...
Our state inspections are 72 hours. If they can't get there in 72 hours, we can say, okay, insulator, go ahead and cover.
Throughout the state, some of those...
That's our state, that's our state electrical code, and they, they have to get there. If they can't, then they can't hold up the process of the job site.
It is being looked at now for, must be other types of inspections, but the other thing, back in DC, the one thing that they kept bringing up over and over again in Public Lands was the Natural Resource mitigation plans, and so, and how effective those are in talking to our federal agencies. So you guys just need an update on that. We're kind of waiting on BSU to get rid, done with some of the other things that they're working on. They are, they are interested in helping us on that plan. I had U of I working on it, Melissa doesn't have time to work on it to that extent, so she's willing to help BSU, but we're still looking for those partners at the table. But that will happen by the time I leave, I don't care if I have to write it myself, I will.
So we, we don't have this going on yet?
We don't have it in place yet. We're working on it, and we have a template for a plan that we really like, but that's kind of where we're at, so, okay, I am done with mine.
I have nothing. Just kidding. Now, my, I wasn't sure what to expect, me, my first time back in Washington DC to that NACO conference. For me, it was about 50/50. A lot of what I enjoyed was talking to commissioners from other parts of the state, other states, all the states out west, and most of them were up north here, so that's...
That working part of it?
So that's, that's why, and they all had the exact same concerns, and it was interesting to hear their input and what they had to say. As far as all the meetings, going and listening to all the people giving their presentations, it was okay, some of it was frustrating. The first lands deal was really good, a lot of guys spoke, I enjoyed it. The next lands deal was like, it was the same guys giving the same presentation, and it's like, I don't hear it again. And, but it was, it was good, you know, I didn't get a whole lot out of it, but I really got out of it, was talking to the staffers in Rich's office, at Crepo's office, Foucher's office, Simpson, Simpson even was very good forthcoming with a lot of information. I got more out of those people than I did just about anybody else. I mean, they, they were in the know, and I liked that. To me, that's progressive. It's like, yeah, I can take this back home with me. But, so that was, that was a part of it that I, I told you that I wouldn't go back if I didn't feel like it was, you know, I don't know as I would. I can get this kind of information out of the staffers going on every day and every week and every month. To me, that would mean a whole lot, that means a whole lot.
It's the connection point, it's the networking, it's knowing now, now you know who to contact back there.
Exactly, I got a whole pile of cards.
You went back there, and establishing that relationship with them is what that's all about.
And that, and I like that part, you get eye to eye, face to face, and you get to meet these people, and they know our concerns, and everybody's back there sitting waiting on Trump to let the smoke clear, because they don't know what to do yet, and I get that. Some of it could be good, some of it we just don't know yet. As far as my stuff here...
Airboard, you have an update on their budget?
Airboard, I got their budget, I think you guys did too.
I changed it all.
You changed it all?
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I apologize for interrupting. They are presenting next Monday, so they have reached out to myself and they're on the agenda.
Good, that's awesome.
There'll be two members appearing. I did ask if they all could appear, but at this point in time, there are two members that will be participating in the discussion with the commissioners.
I know one, I don't, I'd heard something that we had lost our treasure, but I'm not sure that's, I didn't get to make the last meeting, I was sick.
I think that they did find a new treasure, so that might be her that's coming.
That'd be good.
I had spoken with Alice, and Alice announced for some input on the budget, and the, and you and I need to visit, because what, the way that the law reads, they still don't have the full understanding what that law reads. I'm hoping that their new treasure, we can sit and visit with, and she will have a better knowledge and understanding of budgeting, because they have to show the allocation from last year's fair and carry it forward to this year, and they weren't doing that. They were just taking what the county was giving them and trying to use that, and that doesn't work, so...
Yeah, I saw some of those expenditures, and they were huge. It's like, really?
Well, and I asked them not to include anything in their budget that is a county responsibility under our capital improvement. So they were improving buildings, and I said, no, that, those are county facilities, only tell me what you're going to need for the fair.
That's what I saw on some of that, and it's like, why are you paying for this line item and that line item? I was, I was going down through it.
Well, that'll be good. Next, next week will be a good conversation then.
On anything else, I got a, let's see, Waterways was last week, this week is, the rec, it's on Wednesday, and the Snowbell Association is on Thursday.
That recreation plan, are they, did their open houses happen or?
I don't know.
I don't know. I'll find out when they are, so we will...
Kind of surprised from Larry that they were disbanding them, going...
Recreation? No, they're not disbanding them.
What was he saying, they were, they weren't going to have it?
The winter rec.
Oh, the winter rec?
Yeah, but that's only, they're just calling it for this year.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that'll be the end of it. But yeah, but the actual VRC, we do that every third Wednesday, I believe it is, that's down there at Lake Fork. Actually, it's on Monday because it's right after this meeting, that's what we do it. That's a good, I, I like that meeting. A lot of good people on there. Now they're starting to look at this proposal that Johanna and the other ladies, I think Lisa Back, and can't remember all of them, Megan Aller, and there's, there's one more. They're looking at doing that event center down, you know, there by the Pecobal Courts. So I think the VARAC is now trying to get involved with that.
That's good.
So, because it, that'd be a great, great facility if they could pull that one off.
Yeah.
And I'm all for that. That's, that's all nail is.
Right, perfect. So next up on the agenda then is an action item, it is a Hodge setback variance. Cinda, Director Herrick. Okay.
She'll be wanting a race, getting a title.
What? I'm saving my energy.
Yeah, there you go. Like your smile, Cinda.
So this was a variance request, and Planning and zoning Commission unanimously recommended it. So with a unanimous recommendation, it doesn't require a public hearing. So I'll just give the staff report. If you have any questions, you can ask those. So the staff report for variance 24-007, Hodge setback variance, the applicant is Eric Hodge. The property is addressed at 326 West Tamarack Falls Road, it's .42 acres, and the request is to relax setback for his new residential structure from the required 30 feet to 10 feet from the high water line, and then 20 feet to 15 feet for the front setback line. And both of those, he explained thoroughly to the Planning and Zoning Commission as to how he's going to protect water quality in the stream, being that close, using BMPs and runoff from the structure. And then the front setback, he needs that variance, because in order to get his vehicles off the road or out of, you know, the right-of-way, he needs to create a landing platform up by the structure, so he can't move the structure over. The Planning and Zoning Commission agreed with him. The applicant intends to build a home 10 feet from the high water line. The stream is located on the northern portion of the property. The front setback line is from the property line along West Tamarack Falls Road, a public road, which will also be the point of access for the residential structure. Calling Julie subdivision was recorded September 14th, 1959, so it's an old subdivision with small lots and no consideration was given to streams. At a property notice public hearing on February 13th, P&amp;Z Commission unanimously recommended Agency comments that we did receive were from Mike Reno, Central District Health, and he has no objections, provided this is on central sewer. The cellist, Donley Fire Marshal, had no comments or concerns. Emily Hart, McCall Airport Manager, had no comments. ECU had their standard boilerplate letter. Public comments received from the neighbors, Devon and Jennifer Delaney, at 2434 and 2432 Paladin Road, support the setback variances. Ron and Judy Boyd on Paladin Road, support the variances. Brian Lord's at 2453 Maverick, has no objections to the variance and thinks it makes sense given the slope, lot shape, and stream location. And then Andrew Loyst on Maverick Road, owns the property across the stream from the site. The variance from the property line seems reasonable. The requested setback from the high water line does not. Setback and repairing buffers are meant to protect water quality habitat and property from erosion and flooding. Tim Orr, 2445 Maverick, supports the request. It would not negatively impact his property located directly east of the site. Listed different provisions of the Valley County Code for your review. P&amp;Z's conclusions. P and Z's conclusions are, I know Code sixty-seven sixty-five sixteen and Valley County Code nine five H ten recommends to the Board of Commissioners approval of the variance. The Commission is tasked to consider the interests of the adjacent property owners of the neighborhood of utilities and various public agencies. They believe this use is in harmony with the general purpose of the adopted ordinances and policies and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. It's appropriate due to special circumstances. The steep topography creates hardship. The subdivision with small lot sizes was created prior to zoning requirements. They unanimously recommended approval. Will not have an undue adverse impact on the environment, will not have an undue adverse impact on the adjoining private property, will not have an undue adverse impact on government services, and is consistent with the Valley County Comprehensive Plan. There were previous variances issued in this subdivision and along these, these water, waterways. The water will be connected to central sewer and well. And the P and Z Commission unanimously recommended the approval. I wrote a motion, if you decide to approve it, the P and Z recommendation, recommendation included some conditions of approval. And those conditions of approval are, must maintain the vegetation between the foundation and the stream, must place permanent BMPs along the creek to divert water before and after construction, must have an erosion construction plan, roof line must strain away from the creek, and the creek shall not be altered. And then if you decide to approve it with those conditions, also please adopt the facts and conclusions as your own.
And I can ask a question there, so the BMPs along the water, what is the enforcement mechanism there? Is there anything, do we have a development agreement at all, or any type of situation that we can go out and?
It's just a condition of the approval, it'll be a condition on the building permit.
Okay, so we can go out with code enforcement in future and make sure that those BMPs remain in place?
Yeah, because it will be a condition of the building permit.
Okay, and what type of BMP is being called out for, do we have any kind of engineering?
No, that's why they have to do the BMP plan.
Okay.
Just have an erosion construction plan.
Okay.
And the applicant might be able to better describe those. Because he's spent a lot of time looking at this site.
So what about the floodplain around?
There is no floodplain.
There isn't?
It's not a map floodplain. And that's the only thing our flip code has jurisdiction over. And this creek is a set width. It's, it's just one of those deep channels that come off of, out of a spring on the mountain. It's well-established, and he says he's observed it for years and it never exceeds those boundaries.
And so how many feet is that, because I looked at that lot, it was like a, almost a triangle lot in a way. How big is that lot?
It's point four two acres.
Four, oh, point four two acres.
But because of the steep topography in the creek, he has to build further.
Further down.
And his neighbor was here testifying, who has one across the road to the west, along the same creek.
I, I think it's good, I think that it's actually probably going to be a better plan than if he didn't come in for a variance with all the conditions of approval. And I like that there was no one in opposition. So I'd be ready to make a motion if, unless there's more discussion.
I'm good with it.
I would move that we approve variance two four dash zero zero seven Hodge setback variance with the stated conditions of approval, including those five specific ones from the Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission, and adopt the facts and conclusions as written. I'm moving in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I will vote aye, but I'm not very excited about the fact that we're putting housing that close to water bodies. I think it's going to be incumbent upon us to make sure, we will be out there checking the BMPs and making sure that we're not eroding those creeks.
You feel it?
I think that's why we have a Planning and Zoning Commission now, because when this subdivision was put in, there wasn't any, P and Z, correct?
There was no consideration given to that.
I think that would be different in, with today's standards than it would have been back then.
I just, yeah, the only thing that concerns me is let's set the precedent, but.
There's already two or three out there.
Yeah.
Because of the subdivision, I mean, just the way the lots were laid out. And now it's on central sewer, so there's no septics.
That's the only.
That's good.
That's the only thing, you know, that I think is good, but I think in the county, we are going to have to start making sure that we are protecting our waterways, especially that flow into that lake, so that's the important part. Do not use fertilizer, do not use anything that could go down that creek into the lake that could create a problem, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you. Okay, our next action item is not until two o'clock. Doug, where this is basically a discussion, do you think we can take it, or should we wait?
Madam Chairman, I believe you guys can have a discussion. Depending on the Commissioners' decision to make a decision or not.
So I, I honestly feel like this is my fault. I have not done an RFP in the past, and I didn't get it to the newspaper. I, I thought I got it in in time, but they were closed that day because of the holiday. So I think it put it out there in a very short window in order to respond to that. You guys, in order to agree, man, I think that we need to go ahead and expand and extend this RFP to allow for additional applications coming in. I'll notify the one that we did get that there is an expanded time if, if they want to make any changes to their proposal.
I agree, I think that's a good plan, I would like to see more than one application come in, so.
You agree? So, just make sure.
Can just table this?
Well, we can just, we can put it out for a new date to receipt those, those, uh.
Madam Chairman, I. I apologize, I thought I had.
Oh, April fourteenth or April twenty-first would be the next dates to put out there to, to extend this date due.
We have availability on, on both of those times, we have availability on both of those agendas.
I'd really like to see us put it on the fourteenth and try and get this moving. If that's okay with you guys?
Yeah.
So Doug, I would make a motion then that we expand the dates for the requests for proposals on the airgrounds, event center, to April fourteenth. So they will redo that date, and then we will open them on April twenty-first. And Clark Miller, if your department could put that back in the newspaper? That would be much appreciated.
Second.
I moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
That being the last agenda item for this meeting, we will adjourn and then reconvene at the three o'clock joint meeting with the City of McCall related to the area of impact.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.